So it has left me very little time to make sufficient copies and left. But very quickly, to commend the sponsor of the bill itself, Jada Ba A. Jada Ba, for the concern he has as a representative for safety of lives and property. But more importantly, if what I have is correct, what you will see, first is that the bill proposes to add six additional offences to the existing 36 offences already created. And I will quickly just speak to a few matters that I think we should... And these new offences driving against, when we're driving on a roadcar, driving without headlights or any of them, refusing to use pedestrian vehicles and so on. I will just run through in order to be efficient with time. The point to make first about driving on one-way lanes, as it seems to have been presented in the bill, is to suggest that there should be a reconsideration of the way the offence itself is prescribed. And I was going to suggest that there is no offence in the way that this is formulated, except that one drives against the prescribed manner. So the law prescribes a manner. And so when you drive against that prescribed manner, or the prescribed traffic direction, that is where I just thought I should make that point. Also refusing to use a pedestrian vehicle. Again, one gets the sense of the purpose, what's personal safety is what is at the heart of the sponsors. And this is an attitude in our matter, especially when pedestrian vehicles are provided. You absolutely see our people walking, running across the road right under the pedestrian vehicle. But I think the point I would like to urge here is that, whatever ultimately becomes of the bill, the offence really is that not only do they endanger themselves, they endanger other road users and the safety of other road users, and that really is the offence. So it is not necessarily refusing to use it, but by so doing, you are endangering the lives of other road users, including motorists who may either suddenly then stop or and then career into. And again, along the line, driving on a walkway, hitting a pedestrian and so on. I think that, I'm not sure now, as I said, I didn't have a lot of time, but I came here in deference to your invitation this morning and because of the importance of it. There are perhaps existing laws already in the body of our road traffic laws, so we may have to harmonise with them. But the point to make in other jurisdictions, really, in this kind of manner, the offence is driving without care or without the adequate look-up, without care for the safety of other road users, such as by driving on the car or by failing to stop at a zebra crossing and so on and so forth. But that door, the more important issue is the nature of penalties that have been proposed. And I want to invite us to have another look at those penalties. First, they seem to focus on custodial and pecuniary penalties. And to the extent that those custodial and pecuniary penalties have existed for quite a while, without us seeing an appreciable reduction in these incidents, perhaps parliament can be a little more daring and a little more innovative in some of the kind of penalties it wants to consider. And one must acknowledge here, because I get reports from the Federal Road Safety Commission, the comparatively reducing levels of fatalities on our roads, because the numbers I saw in the last quarter of last year in the reports to the ministry showed a comparative reduction, but we need to scale up on. So in terms of deterrence, I think that I would propose that parliament considers non-custodial sentences that inconvenience the perpetrator and at the same time corrects them. Sending them to jail first doesn't correct. Fines in themselves also do not correct. And we do have a category of offenders that are classified as residivists, that irrespective of the fine, they will commit the offence anyway. So parliament in this sense is invited to consider sanctions like community service. It's not custodial, but it probably has more... The thing I can draw on here is the example of the Lagos Road Traffic Law, where community sentences were prescribed for the first time in our judiciary schools. And magistrates then had the capacity to order community service, cutting a lawn in public and in the video, put on TV and those kinds of things, cleaning public facilities, then compulsory retraining, so that wherever those persons committed those driving offences, they must go for compulsory retraining. And the inconvenience perhaps and the time spent, because the punishment then is not fine. Punishment is a compulsory driving, retraining and recertification under supervision. And perhaps the more outlandish one, to also assess the person's psychological frame of mind. You want to begin to think that should this person undergo some sort of psychiatric evaluation at the discretion of the magistrate? These are so many things. And because in the Lagos state model, between 2013 and 2014, I recall then that over 2,000 offenders were sentenced to various forms of community service. And you can imagine, if with our congested prisons, we have put 2,000 more people in, and when the whole world is trying to decongest their prisons. So these are some of the thoughts that were fairly young people. But as we go forward, there are one or two other things that I think are very important, and then I will be done. It's in section 15 of the Principal Act that provides that the operation of the COE, the FRSC, shall cover all public highways. But instead of them defining public highways, it goes on to define public routes. And I think there's some tidying up that needs to be done there. And then it then goes on in defining a public route, to define a public route as a federal, state or any type of road used for passing by commuters. And this is the heart of the matter in it, why I'm here. The capacity of the FRSC to cover federal, state and indeed local government rules that exist, perhaps suggests to me that we have not in framing this legislation paid enough attention to the federal nature of our political arrangement. Because if we look at, I think it is Article 63 of the exclusive legislative list, the only matter with respect to which national parliament can actually make law is with regards to federal trunk routes. And therefore, it would not, in my view, be able to make a law to cover a road within a state that is not so designated as a federal trunk route. And therefore, it will seem that the COE will not have jurisdiction in those places. And then how do we have, and these things happen really not only on federal trunk routes, but even within rules within the territory of states. And so for me, it's important then to rethink this. And I will make the connection with driver's licence. Because this is a position I have urged previously. For some reason, for some reason, we seemed to want to take, pardon me, driving schools, not driver's licences, driving schools. We seemed to want to take that responsibility, or in fact, we were tempted to take it away from the local governments. It used to be a municipal and local matter before. And the reason is obvious. Where would we ever gather the capacity to train people? By investing, FRSC itself is shipping from one shop to another, looking for resources. So if it had to maintain, let us even say, one driving school in each of the 774 local governments. Now perhaps the responsibility can be shared, where training is regulated by state law. And then there is, because they now issue licences through the state offices. And then the process is monitored. And this is important, because the accidents that occur really, I made the point always that an automobile is not a toy, it is a machine. Unlike all machines, whether it's a telephone, whether it's a camera, you must be trained how to use it. But sadly, we perhaps have left the training part. So almost everybody gets into a car, does a few shuffleings and is on the highway. And so if this legislation is going to take us closer to the objective, it should focus more on driving, instruction and training, and how to use the full capacity of our federal arrangement to impact that level. I think that is my most important consideration, really, how we ensure that only people who have learnt how to use that machine get onto the road and start a car. So from then on, when we look at the number of roads that we have in the country, the percentage of federal roads is less than 20%. The bulk of the roads really own and manage under state jurisdiction. And if they are not involved in the process of training people, and it is people who are in states, in any event, who ultimately move on the federal roads from one state to the other. So if the foundational error has been made, we would then see the kind of carnage, the kind of loss of lives that Honorable Jada Ba is trying by this bill to correct. So I think that is the end of my intervention, and I'm grateful for your time.
I forgot to say we moved from the federal to the local.
The honourable minister, that's such input. And if there are other upcoming, we will definitely pay due diligence to it and to see that we incorporate. This high term now, we start changing some of our laws to really meet the aim. And again, the issue of driving school too, it came about with a motion, we will also look into it. And paying particular attention to the issue of this instruction and training, that should have been a defined role for the driving school. And just like you said, it originated from the community, then the local government. Probably, if this thing now can take it, or if we can reflect, because driving has become a necessary need. And in our country, they have, thank you all, in the industry, we can have more of commercial mobility, like the train, the metro line. This might reduce the use of personal cars, especially for long distances. And then probably, the number of drivers on the road can be reduced. Because a train can convey 50, 100 people from inter-cities. If they are in place, you can imagine the number of cars you would put off the road. By reducing the number of cars, invariably you are reducing the number of people to manipulate the machine. And we know what it means. So definitely, sir, we will really pay due diligence to what you say and we will definitely look at it. So at least this public hearing, even if stopped at this juncture, we have received some input. But we are shivering, there are more and more rumors to receive, that they throw more light, that will even talk outside what the minister has spoken. So ladies and gentlemen, feel free to contribute, that is the essence of the public hearing. At the end of this public hearing, it is the views we will now collect and then go back into the legislative chamber for the bill to continue. Just a second reading, perhaps of committee, we still have a debate before we submit our reports, before the adjutant reading, before it becomes a law. People should don't go here with the impression that a law has been enacted, or so. No, 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 we are in the process. So we really desire to get your input. So Mr. Chair, Honorable Minister, we really appreciate. So craving time despite your tight schedule. And I think if I didn't forget an issue, you permit us to really allow you to make your observations and then go, which has given us a good thought. And I do thank you, if you have the time to stay with us, or you can take your leave. But members of this public hearing, please. Honorable Minister has to go because he has a tight schedule. We all know, we don't intend, we've seen three ministers collapse together. And Mr. Minister, one minute. They are doing my attention in two seconds, to take the message.
Thank you very much for coming to your legislative conference. And I was actually invited to this gathering, to be a member. Because we noticed in previous administrations, there has been blastat disregard or disrespect to whatever resolutions and report of investigation coming out of the House of Representatives. And as we all know, this is a new era, it's a new spirit and the spirit don't change. I want to first and foremost, on behalf of the leadership and members of the House of Representatives, to thank the honourable minister, the former Chair, for the respect and the sharp response to our embassy's invitation. We thank you so much, and we want to tell you that from time to time, things like this will be coming up. Movements will come up, it will lead to resolutions. Petitions will come, it will lead to a report which will be adopted at the House. Investigation will come out. Who wants to, please instigate your intelligence to please respect this resolution. The era of it being armed, it doesn't have a force of law. I'm very sure the honourable minister, P. D. S. N. A. of Nigeria, knows that. That is not entirely true. So we want to, before we take your leave, sir, we might be getting in touch with you from time to time for the House of Representatives, with our resolution and report, we believe they are being respected. Thank you and God bless you so much.
Commission, Deputy Chairman, Chief Executive, the Federal Roads and Commissions. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand on the Assistant Protocol. I just want to mention about 10 of our submissions, which I strongly believe will go a long way to solve the problems we are trying to address. Number one, I believe that one of the reasons why we are having these challenges is because we don't have in place penalties or punishments that can serve as deterrents to traffic offenders. As we are by some organisations and even individuals, don't bother about the training of drivers, but by the time this corporate manslaughter act is in place, it will prevent them from committing some of the traffic offences we have been talking about. So the issue of the corporate manslaughter act is very, very important and must be incorporated or should be incorporated into the act. The second point has to do with the training. As the honourable minister just mentioned, there must be corrective training programmes for traffic offenders. Because once they know that they are going to spend time or hours, Nigerians don't like wasting time. The moment they know that they are going to spend time for corrective training or correctional training, they will surely try to avoid it, because they don't want anything to waste their time. They can part away with their money, but they don't want to part with their time. So I believe that the correctional training is very, very important. When traffic offenders are arrested, they can be sent to the approved driving schools for correctional training. And most of them, as we all know, did not have the foundational training at the issue. A lot of the people that are holding the driver licence in Nigeria today did not go through the conventional driving schools. And many of them don't even know the traffic signs, not to talk of obeying the traffic signs. So there is a need to send them back to the driving schools for correctional training, where they will be further groomed and their capacities will be built, so that they will be able to know what driving really entails and what safety entails. So the third point we want to mention here has to do with the issue of the construction of driving range. That driving schools are expected to have driving range. I must mention here that as important as the driving range is, a lot of driving schools, virtually all the driving schools, cannot even afford, virtually all the driving schools cannot afford to construct driving range, because their sources of income have been narrowed. But I want to use the opportunity to commend the leadership of the Federal Roads and Commissions for coming up with a new driver licence portal, which is starting today. I believe that with this portal, traffic will be directed to the driving schools. People will now, it will be mandatory for people to go to driving schools to obtain the necessary training, the mandatory training, before they can get their driver licence. Because before now, people don't bother to even go to driving schools. The moment you have extra money, the driver licence is about 6,350, with your 20,000, you can go to any capturing centre, you can go to any licence centre and get your driver licence without even knowing how to drive. But with this new portal in place, it will no more be business as usual. People will need to go to driving schools to get the mandatory training, which will really help them to drive safely on the road. Then another, the number four point I want to mention here has to do with the controversy between the VIO and the FRSC. It is very, very important that this honourable house should look into the possibility of resolving the conflict between the VIOs and the FRSC as to who has the mandate to regulate the establishment and operation of driving schools. This is a critical issue that we have often overlooked and it is very, very vital, very, very key. And it has a lot to do with the training. Because like the honourable minister mentioned, the issue of training is very, very germane when we are talking of safety on Nigerian roads. So anything that has to do with the issue of training has to be addressed. So there is an ongoing controversy between the FRSC and the VIOs as to who has the mandate to regulate the establishment and operation of driving schools, including the supervision. Number five point has to do with the functions. I want to use this opportunity to appeal, though we have been talking about that before, I want to use the opportunity to appeal to the FRSC and this honourable house to look into the possibility of scaling down a little bit the functions of FRSC, so that they can concentrate on their core areas of competence. For example, in one of the offences here, one has to do with arresting people that are hawking on pedestrian overhead bridges. I don't think the FRSC should have such time to be climbing pedestrian bridge to arrest somebody who is hawking on pedestrian bridge when there are lots of other activities more important, more relevant to safety to handle. That should be within the confines of the state governments. Because I believe in Lagos state, for example, where I operate, there is no single pedestrian bridge here constructed by the federal government. And before we know it, there will be a controversy between the federal government, between the state government and FRSC, that we constructed the overhead bridge, why are you coming there to arrest the hawkers? It is the responsibility of the KI. Because in Lagos state, we have the kick against the discipline group, the agency that is responsible for arresting people that are hawking on pedestrian overhead bridges. So that has already been taken care of by the state government. So that should not be part of what the FRSC has to bother about for now. Then there's a need, I want to implore this honourable house to encourage the Federal Road Safety Commission to completely block, we have already mentioned it, it's just to encourage them to block all the loopholes, all the existing loopholes that have been making it possible for people to avoid training and be licensed. So once the loopholes are blocked and people can no more get driver licence, except they are trained, it will go a long way to build the capacities of the drivers we will be having on our roads. Then there's a need also, I want to implore this honourable house to encourage the Federal Roads and Commissions, even as they have been doing, to encourage them to do more, to build the capacities of the various driving schools in Nigeria. They've been organising trainings for the driving schools, there's a need to do much more to build the capacities of the driving instructors, because you cannot give what you don't have. And if the driving instructors are not properly trained by the FRSC, it will be difficult for them to deliver. But by the time they are regularly trained by the FRSC, it will be possible for them to drain the learners and even retrain the experienced drivers as contained in the curriculum already designed for the driving schools by the Federal Roads and Commission. I also want to implore this honourable house to encourage the top government officials to consider, as very important, the patronage of driving schools. Because before now, we had situations where somebody who is a minister, a commissioner, we'd just say, "My son, please go to that school", or "Go and get your driver licence at that centre", "Oh, this person is for the minister, please get the licence for him", overlook other protocols. I think it is very important for us, because leadership, we should live by a sample. Leaders should live by a sample. When a minister or the wife of a minister attends a driving school, before he can get his driver licence, it will be very easy to actually enforce that law. Because if a minister does not, I mean, does not allow his children to pass through the driving school before getting driver licence, so what stops others from also doing the same? So we should lead by a sample. I think the government officials should be encouraged also to lead by a sample in these regards, so that we can have a better system in Nigeria for the safety of every one of us on the roads. Also, we have a presentation here that has to do with encouraging the federal and the state governments to support the driving schools. Because when we are talking about training, if you go to some of the driving schools, people have been talking to us and said, "Look, look at your driving school, you don't have standards". In the UK, for example, driving school operators, driving school instructors are sponsored for certain levels of training, free of charge. Governments do sponsor the driving instructors, because they know that at the end of the day, by the time the capacity of the driving instructors are built, they will come back and pass the knowledge and the skills to the drivers. And so they'll be better on the road. So there's a need for the government also to take safety as a matter of importance. I want to commend this house at this juncture for paying attention to safety. Well, I cannot talk much about it, but as since I've been talking about or working on road safety, I've never had an opportunity to witness an occasion like this. And I know that I've never had a presidential and executive pronouncement concerning safety in Nigeria. I think this will be the first time I'm witnessing an occasion like this. And it is very important for us to see more of that. So that the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, if he says something about road safety or the Vice President says something about road safety, it enters the ears of people more. There's a need to encourage the government at all levels, both at the executive level, legislative level, judiciary level, to concentrate, to do some things that will enlighten the members of the public that safety is very, very important. Because looking at the number of people that are perishing on the road on daily basis, it is not pleasant at all. We have been talking about Boko Haram. If you look at the number of people that have been killed through Boko Haram, which we are all afraid of, they are not up to the number of people that have died on Nigerian roads. So which means that road safety should be given priority or attention that it desires. Number 10, which is the final one I want to mention, sending traffic offenders to driving schools for correctional training, which I have earlier mentioned, should be emphasised, should be encouraged. Once again, I want to encourage, I want to commend the Federal Road Safety Commission for the steps they have taken so far concerning the new portal. And I believe that more will be done to ensure the effectiveness of the portal. And finally, I thank this Honorable House for this occasion. And I believe that the resolutions are...
I told you earlier, this is just an initiative. And as you heard it from the voice of the speakers of the deal, it just is unfair.